Good evening, folks. At this point, we'll call the regular meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, February 5, 2013. At this point, I'm going to call on our county manager, Ron Smith. I believe he has a public announcement he would like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to let everyone know that we experienced a loss yesterday. Our Director of Public Health, Mr. Jim Higgins, who has not been with us that long, he was hired in November, passed away suddenly, and we don't have any details other than that at this point. And I'll be glad to pass that information on as I hear it. But it took us all by surprise, and I hope you'll keep the family and your thoughts in prayers.
Okay. Thank you, sir. At this point, join us in our invocation, please. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you again for this opportunity to convene together and conduct business, and thank you for each one here and their willingness to come out. I pray that we'll conduct ourselves in a way that'll honor you and that these folks will be proud of, that we'll fervently desire to serve you and to serve them. I pray you'll bless them throughout this meeting, you'll bless them as they return to their homes and go about their business. I pray for blessings on our county, our state, and our nation. As we celebrate these liberties, help us remember that they all come from you, for it's in the name of our Lord we ask it. Amen. This evening, we are privileged to have Mr. Tyler Hager from troop number 607. And Mr. Hager is going to come forth with his scoutmaster, and he's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you gentlemen would come forth, please. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, do you have any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
Yes, sir. I have three changes. I'd like to add two things under closed session. The first would be a personnel matter, and that's General Statute 143, 318, 11A6. And the second is a property acquisition, and that's 143, 318, 11A5. And I would also like to remove, under appointments to boards and commissions, item B, and that's for the local emergency planning committee.
Okay. Are there any adjustments to this agenda from any member of the board? Mr. Chairman, I wasn't paying enough attention to what the manager just said. Is it included in the motion or the agenda item for closed session that we have an attorney-client privilege matter?
Yes, sir. We have one.
And economic development as well?
We do not have economic development, so...
Do we have that?
Yeah, because same general statute and the reference is number four.
So we do have one for economic development?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Again, any additions or deletions or amendments coming from any member of the board? Well, under new bill, I had a resolution I'd like to introduce also. Under our public comment period this evening, Mr. Phil Hazel, as required, has requested to speak, and I have granted him permission. All right, any other adjustments? Hearing none, I move that we adopt this agenda as amended. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have no presentations of special recognitions and awards this evening, and I'm not aware of any appointments before the board and no public hearings, so we will move immediately to administrative matters. And Mr. Smith, I'll turn it over to you at this point.
Thank you. Bill Furchess, our tax administrator, has a report of unpaid taxes that are liens on real property and a request to establish Wednesday, March 13, 2013, as the advertising date for tax liens.
Good evening. That's exactly what I was going to say. And that's my purpose. It's a requirement of law, and I've given Jean Moore a copy of all the taxes that are unpaid that are a lien on real property as of February 28. And tonight, I'm also asking that you set the advertising date of March 13. This is a requirement of law.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Furchess?
How are the collections coming as opposed to last year? Are they behind?
Compared to last year, we are currently, through the end of January, we are 0.79% ahead of last year, which I'm very pleased with that. That comes up to about $773,000. We're also ahead in delinquent collections by $245,000 or $49,000, and with interest and penalties up about $104,000. So we're having a better of the year than it's been the last four or five years.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Furchess? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve his request from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Item B is a request from the Health Department for permission to write off uncollected patient accounts. And I've asked Susan Blumstein to give this request, because Mr. Higgins was scheduled to be here tonight.
Good evening. There is a memo number two in your package where the Health Department requests to write off $31,500 in uncollectible accounts. These accounts are from fiscal year 2009, and about 26% of the total that's being written off are Medicaid patients. The balance is private pay. All of these accounts have received 30, 60, and 90-day past-due letters, and those that are over $50 each have been submitted to the North Carolina Debt Setoff. So if any of these patients or their primary caregivers were responsible parties, I should say, have state income tax refunds, or if they were in the lottery, the amount they owe Iredell County will be withheld and remitted to us.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Blumstein?
The only comment I'll have is I know that during the tenure I had on the Board of Health, they did a pretty good job of collections, and it was a very small percentage that was uncollected, and I assume that's still the case.
Yes, sir, it is. Last year, they actually wrote off, or excuse me, for the year, and in June 30, 2008, they wrote off $33,571. So we're a little bit less for 2009 and 2008.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? If not, the floor is open for a motion.
I recommend we approve the request for the write-off.
Motion for approval comes from Commissioner Boone. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item C is a request from the Solid Waste Department for the awarding of three-year pre-event contracts for the monitoring and removal of emergency event disaster debris. And Dean Lael, our purchasing manager, and David Martin, our emergency services director, is here, are here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The county's pre-event disaster debris management contracts expired in December, and we've been extending those on a month-to-month basis ever since. The county needs to reestablish new pre-event contracts to make sure that in the event we have, do have disaster, and we're struck with a lot of debris, natural and man-made in the area, that we can ensure the county citizens have speedy recovery. To this end, staff released an RFP to solicit contractors to perform both debris removal and debris management. We received proposals on December 7, 2012. We received four proposals for debris removal contractors and two from management contractors. We reviewed the proposal. They were all found to be responsive to the solicitation document, and all are eligible for award. The Solid Waste Director, David Lambert, formed an evaluation committee comprised of county staff and also representatives from local municipalities to evaluate proposals based on their prices offered, qualifications, ability to meet our needs, and past experience with FEMA-related disasters. The committee reviewed and evaluated each proposal and formulated a recommendation based on the merits of those proposals. Price was the primary concern. That is also FEMA requirement now, that we do consider price as that primary concern. You should have copies of all the evaluation documents in front of you, and after careful consideration, the committee unanimously agreed to recommend Ceres Environmental to be awarded for the debris removal contract, and SAIC, formerly BEC, to be awarded for our debris monitoring contract. If it's approved tonight, staff will approach each contractor to finalize the appropriate terms and conditions of the contracts for each type of contract. Each contract will be awarded for an initial three-year term, with options to renew for additional one-year periods. Once documents are finalized, they'll be given to the board chair for signature. Solid Waste and the E Management Directors do recommend award and are requesting for approval and award of these contractors contingent upon reasonable terms and conditions being arranged with these contractors. Be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Any questions, Mr. Lael? If there are no questions, the floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item D is a request for approval of Budget Amendment Number 21 to appropriate funds from contingency for inmate confinement costs.
Last fall, we talked to the board about the overcrowding situation at the jail and the need to transport some of Iredell County inmates to other facilities to house them. We have had inmates in the Ash County Jail and currently in the Rowan County Jail. As of January 22, we had already spent $41,000, or right at $41,000. And jail staff estimates, at the current levels, that we're having to send out inmates to outside facilities, that we're going to need $185,000 to take us through June 30. And this request, a transfer from the county's contingency fund to the jail for outside confinement.
Any questions, Ms. Blumstein?
What does that compute to per inmate per day?
It's $40 a day.
What is our estimated cost of the, you know, current expense cost to the inmates that we have in our jail here?
Actually, $73 a day.
You're saying we're getting out cheaper by taking people somewhere else?
Well, that's what we're seeing today.
Well, I'm sure...
They have the capacity.
Well, the other county, they got their fixed and variable costs figured in.
That's correct.
They're just trying to recover what they can, I imagine. Okay, any other questions?
Does that get us through the year?
That's what I was going to ask.
That's based on Captain Conley's estimate.
Because that wipes us out. I mean, that gets us down to 33 for contingency for the rest of the year, and we've got six solid months, or five months to go.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
If not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment 21.
We have a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 21 from Commissioner Robertson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And the final administrative matter is a request for approval of the January 15, 2013 minutes.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Well, I couldn't find anything wrong with them this time.
Okay. Can I take that as a motion, they be approved? Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Boone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. Troutman Planning Board, Extraterritorial Jurisdiction, we have one announcement. The Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, we have two announcements. And that brings us to appointments to boards and commissions. The Nursing Home Advisory Board, we have one appointment this evening. Floor is open for nominations.
I nominate Brian Griffith.
Okay. Commissioner Griffith nominates Mr. Brian Griffith. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations and appoint Mr. Griffith by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item C is appointment to the Board of Equalization and Review for 2013. We have six appointments. The floor is open for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Hal Jolly, Don Danielton, Karen Cardy. Those three I know. The other two gentlemen, I don't know.
Okay. I would nominate Mr. Mike Brotherton and Ken Pritchard. Those two. Any other nominations?
We do have a nominee for the alternate position.
Okay. I would nominate Mr. Mike Loftus for the alternate. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations and appoint these folks by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now, we need to proceed with the election of chairman and vice chairman. As Mr. Brotherton is willing to serve as chairman again, and Mr. Pritchard is agreed to serve as vice chair. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and appoint Mr. Brotherton as chairman and Mr. Pritchard as vice chairman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have no unfinished business that I'm aware of. Public comment period. Mr. Hazel, would you like to come forward and speak to us?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name's Phil Hazel. I've come to you as a resident of Iredell County for 35 years, a business owner in Iredell County for 35 years, and a taxpayer for 35 years. My company and I paid $34,280.76 in Iredell County property and personal taxes last year. And I'd like to thank you for your low tax rate. This obligates me to talk about an opinion I have about how my money is used, not because of how much I paid, but because I want to see it used well. Tonight, you have on your agenda requests for adoption of a resolution that is an example of wasted time and effort and ultimately resources over a matter that should not be of concern to the commission as a body, though you as individuals have not lost your personal rights of free speech by reason of your election as commissioners. Specifically, the resolution proposed by Mr. Boone to request a modification of the state statute to allow the concealed carry of firearms by employees of the school system on school property is ill-conceived and a waste of your time and the taxpayers' money. There are five wherestes in this resolution. The first wherewith is that schools should be as safe as possible. This has my complete endorsement. But that does not, I believe, arise from allowing school employees with concealed carry permits to bring their guns to school. The requirements for the issuance of a concealed carry permit do not include the rigor, practice, threat assessment skills, and appropriate reaction training, as law officers receive. Further, there are no requirements for annual requalification, recurrent training, performance assessment, medical review, or monitoring of psychological factors. It is actually taught, and properly so, that the use of firearms should be the last resort. Having school personnel carrying concealed weapons could actually interfere with the best advice. Get as far from the threat as fast as you can. The second wherewith states that current statute classifies carrying an array of weapons, from linoleum knives to a full range of firearms, as felonies. It's obvious that legislators have already found that weapons on school property are not good. For every cry to restrict firearms ownership, to every cry to arm the schools, they're based on emotion and a lack of understanding. Too much emotion, I think, is bad policy. The third wherewith is that holders of a valid North Carolina concealed handgun permit have a clean criminal record, have taken classroom instruction and firearms use, and have passed both a written and marksmanship test. There's not a lot of weight in those qualifications. Matter of fact, it sounds like my next-door neighbors. No training on threat assessment, no psychological evaluation. I think this is a pretty coarse sieve to pass through. The fourth wherewith says that schools would be safer if permit holders would be allowed to carry their weapons at school. I ask anybody to prove it. There are no data that substantiate that claim. If all threat events were identical, it's possible that plans and training could make things safer. The threat events are not identical. They are irrational, spontaneous, frightening, and require prompt, appropriate action. Plus, the addition of a large number of concealed weapons on a school campus raises the occurrence of accidents, lethal response to non-lethal events, and intra-employee lethal events. I'd hate for the word to be that there was an elemental shooting like there was a postal shooting. The fifth wherewith, that school employees who hold a concealed handgun permit should have the right to carry a weapon in their workplace. Here's where an individual right, which doesn't actually exist, impinges on the rights of other individuals, those who don't want concealed weapons carried on school grounds. No one holding a concealed carry permit in North Carolina got one with the understanding they could carry wherever they pleased. There are many places where concealed weapons are not allowed, courtrooms and commission chambers, for example. There are sound reasons that weapons are excluded from many public places, and there are certainly private companies that do not allow concealed weapons on the premises, which I think is a sound policy. After all this, my point of emphasis is that stuff like this does not need to be the business of the commission. The commission should stick to establishing policy, funding the schools, zoning, building code enforcement, infrastructure, looking to the future, attracting new investment, budgeting, maintaining the financial standing of the county. I thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'm sorry to take up your valuable time.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel. That brings us to new business, and the first one is a consideration of proclamation to preserve and defend the United States and North Carolina Constitution, proclaim February 19, 2013, as the Right to Bear Arms Day in Iredell County. And the chair will recognize Commissioner Griffith.
It's with a lot of thought that I've been thinking about the incidents that have happened around our country, and it's a subject that's very near and dear to my heart. I work with children every day, and you never want to see someone harm anybody. And on the flip side of that, in this country, we celebrate a lot of freedoms. We have a lot of freedoms that set us apart from the rest of the world, freedoms that folks in North Korea don't have. I was reading a book this week called "The Original Argument" by Glenn Beck, and he wrote that freedom is not the natural state of man, and without a shield in place to protect the rights of freedom, it becomes fleeting. And in America, that shield is our Constitution. Patrick Henry wrote that the Constitution is not an instrument for the federal government to restrain the people, but it is an instrument for the people to restrain the government lest it comes to dominate our lives and interests. Our founding fathers created a republic. They gave us a Bill of Rights. And in the Bill of Rights is our First Amendment freedom of religion, speech, press, the right to assemble, and the right to petition our government. The Second Amendment is the right to keep and bear arms. I firmly believe that the freedom to exercise the First Amendment is not possible without the Second Amendment. And as commissioners, we take an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States and of North Carolina. And with recent actions on behalf of our president, I felt it important that, as a body commissioners, we make a public statement. And a public statement is made from the commissioners in the form of either a proclamation or a resolution. And so I offer tonight a proclamation regarding the Second Amendment. I am a concealed carry permit holder, and I have a concealed carry permit license, and I carry my gun, not because I'm afraid of anything, but I carry it because I know that in the event of something, I can protect myself and my family. There's a lot of rhetoric coming down that says the Second Amendment, that hunters, you know, a hunter doesn't need all of these weapons and things. That's not what the Second Amendment, we don't need that. You know, the Second Amendment was not written to protect hunters. The Second Amendment was written so that we could protect ourselves from a government. And so with those thoughts, I've asked the Board of Commissioners to support this proclamation. And there is some hesitancy, because there is a thought that maybe we don't have any business getting into national politics and national issues, but those things that happen on a national level affect us right here in Iredell County. And so it's with great respect to the men on this board and to the citizens of this county that I ask this proclamation to be considered. And I'll read it, Mr. Chair, when you feel it appropriate. All right. It's a proclamation to preserve and defend the Constitution of the United States and North Carolina, and to proclaim February 19, 2013, as the Right to Bear Arms Day in Iredell County. Whereas the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution states, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state," the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. And whereas Section 30 of Article 1 in the North Carolina Constitution states, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state," the God-given right to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. And whereas President Obama recently announced his 23 anti-gun initiatives, even going as far as to use executive order to bypass Congress and our God-given right to keep and bear arms. And whereas a militia, when properly formed, is in fact the people themselves and include all capable men of bearing arms. And whereas it being necessary to the security of a free state meant that the right of the people to bear arms was and remains the ultimate barrier to government tyranny. And whereas gun control only ensures that law-abiding citizens are powerless in the face of criminal threat. Therefore, be it proclaimed as follows, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners resolves to defend the Second Amendment and Section 30, Article 1, and will not bow down to unconstitutional laws, executive orders, foreign or domestic tyranny. The Iredell County Board of Commissioners calls upon the Governor and General Assembly of North Carolina to pass legislation that will guarantee the protection of our God-given right to keep and bear arms for all North Carolinians. The Iredell County Board of Commissioners hereby directs the county manager to ensure that no county-paid staff participate in, nor allow any county resource to be used in the implementation of any unconstitutional... in the implementation of any unconstitutional law, executive order, or executive directive that infringes on the God-given right to keep and bear arms. The Iredell County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim February nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, as the Right to Bear Arms Day in Iredell County. This the fifth day of February, two thousand thirteen. Respectfully submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Would y'all consider a slight modification to the wording? Replace "God-given" with "constitutional"?
I would accept "and constitutional." Our Constitution clearly states that we were endowed these rights by our Creator.
Ms. Griffith, a motion is yet to be made, so can I interpret that to mean that you offered this as a motion and you would be willing to accept that amendment?
Yes, sir.
So the motion on the floor right now is to adopt this proclamation as amended. Any discussion on that motion?
Well, if nobody else jumps in, I will make a few remarks. I, I have some extensive written remarks. In the interest of time, I will try to condense them and ask that the remarks be included in the minute. But this is, in the minutes, this is an important issue, and I think it does deserve some constitution. Because I think the Second Amendment to the Constitution is just, the right to keep and bear arms is just as important, just as important as the First Amendment rights to freedom of speech and freedom of religion, and the rights to due process and fair treatment and criminal procedures that are set forth in the Fourth through Eighth Amendments. I think the Second Amendment is just as important as those rights. The Declaration of Independence proclaims it is, is a self-evident truth that all men are created, or endowed by their Creator. It says endowed by their Creator, with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It says governments are instituted to preserve these rights. Therefore, the primary purpose, not the only, but the primary purpose of government is a means of collective self-defense, both against people who would do us harm here and against foreign enemies. The right to life and liberty doesn't mean much unless one has the right to defend one's life and liberty. That includes not only the right to collective self-defense, but the right to individual self-defense. And as Justice Scalia stated in the Heller opinion, the Second Amendment right to bear arms at least includes the individual right to keep weapons that are in common use for self-defense. History of the Second Amendment shows that its purpose was to secure the inherent God-given right to self-defense. In a sense, the Second Amendment helps protect the rights that are guaranteed in the First Amendment and the Fourth through the Eighth Amendments. The right to possess a firearm for hunting, for sport, for target practice, whatever, that's an important right, a legitimate right. But that is not the purpose the Second Amendment was written for. A whole century before our founders wrote the Bill of Rights in England, the English Bill of Rights of sixteen hundred and eighty-nine states that all Protestants have the right to keep arms for self-defense. Now, our founders, a hundred years later, they expanded upon that right, and they, and they included all citizens, not just members of a certain religious persuasion, but all citizens. It's kind of ironic to me that in spite of the religious prejudice that existed in England at the time their Bill of Rights was written, the English subjects, or British subjects of three hundred years ago actually had more rights as far as firearm ownership than they do today. They've gone backwards in that category. Stephen Hallbrook is an attorney and Second Amendment author who has extensively studied the history of the Bill of Rights. And he says that he can find no person, let me read this, "No evidence that anyone involved with drafting, debating, or ratifying the Second Amendment considered it to be anything other than a protection of a pre-existing individual right to keep and bear arms." And there are many, many quotes from the founders that back this up. I won't read all of them, I'll include them in the minutes, but there are quite a few, quite a few quotes that back this up, from James Madison, from Thomas Jefferson, from George Mason, from Patrick Henry, from a whole lot of well-known founders. I don't think any serious scholar can really dispute that the Second Amendment was meant to be a right to individual self-defense, not just the right to have the militia be armed. Most people on the left, they know that a full-scale frontal assault on our rights will probably fail, so they go about it kind of obliquely. They say, "I support the Second Amendment, but no one needs a dangerous assault weapon. Why do you need ten clip, ten shots to kill a deer? We need to, to have stricter legislation to keep criminals and the mentally ill from possessing firearms, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." Let's examine some of these arguments. Aside from infringing the right to self-defense, most so-called gun control measures don't reduce violent crime. Indeed, the opposite is true. And of course, the reason is so obvious that anyone should grasp it. Someone who is going to break a law against murder is hardly going to obey a law saying that he can't possess a certain firearm. It's estimated there are about a hundred million firearms in the United States today, and the criminals will get, gun control measures will only disarm the peaceful and law-abiding people. And this truth has been recognized for a long time. There's a passage from a French writer that Thomas Jefferson copied in his commonplace book back in seventeen seventy-six. And some people on the left have made much of the fact that these weren't actually Jefferson's words. And I'm not saying they were, they're the words of a French author. He copied them in his book of sayings and quotes that he thought were important, that he, he thought were worth writing down, so I assume it reflects his opinions. And he, it said, this is back in seventeen seventy-six, quote, "The laws that forbid the carrying of arms disarm only those who are neither inclined nor determined to commit crimes. Such laws make things worse for the assaulted and better for the assailants. They serve to encourage rather than to prevent homicides. For an unarmed man may be attacked with greater confidence than an armed man." That seems pretty obvious. The term assault weapon has no agreed-upon meaning. It's usually used to refer to a semi-automatic rifle that has certain cosmetic features that make it look like a military weapon, and generally functionally, they're no different than any other semi-automatic rifle. And even if you could outlaw so-called assault weapons, you wouldn't put a dent in the crime rate. The last year's figures are available, two thousand and eleven, according, this is the FBI Uniform Crime Statistics. Firearms were used to commit eight thousand five hundred and eighty-eight murders in the United States. Six thousand two hundred and twenty were handgun murders. Only three hundred victims were murdered by rifles of any type. By comparison, there were one thousand six hundred and ninety-four murders by a knife, four hundred and ninety-six by blunt objects such as hammers and clubs, and seven hundred and twenty-eight by fists, hands, or feet. All of those things were responsible for more murders than any type of rifle. We also hear there should be stronger measures concerning background checks. Anyone buying a firearm from a licensed dealer now has to undergo a background check. Private individuals selling arms do not have to go, undergo a background check. If I have a weapon I want to sell to Mr. Johnson or Ms. Griffith, I can do so without having to have a federal official come in and do a background check. But if you're a dealer, you know, purchasers have to undergo a background check. So-called gun show loophole you hear about, that just pertains to private individuals buying and selling weapons at a gun show. Just, and they can do that without a background check, just as they can at any other location. The, the, another real interesting statistic is that, to me, is that since our military involvement in Afghanistan, there have been over twice as many Americans murdered by firearms in the city of Chicago than we've had military casualties in Afghanistan. Chicago has some of the strictest gun control laws in the United States. So they obviously do not work. I think that the people who are passing, are urging, you know, Senator Feinstein and the other people and, and our president, I try to be respectful and call him that, but, and other people who are supporting gun control measures, they know that the measures that they're pushing won't work. If, if those measures, measures that are being proposed pass, sooner or later, there'll be another terrible mass killing. And they'll say, "Oh, well, they didn't work, we need to pass stricter measures." And then we'll pass stricter measures, there'll be another incident. And they'll pass yet stricter measures, and the process will continue until no one will, private citizen will have the right to own a firearm. That's basically what's happened in England over the past fifty or sixty years. And that's what they have in mind for us here today. In fact, Dianne Senator Feinstein, who's the main author of this bill, she admitted on national TV one time that if she had the votes in Congress, she would, you know, support legislation to outlaw all private firearm ownership. My opinion, the only difference between her and the president is that she was just a little bit more candid about her intentions. But I believe we're facing a serious and imminent threat to one of our right, basic rights, free citizens. And I think it's our obligation as free citizens and individuals, as members of an elected body, to do whatever we can to preserve our Second Amendment rights. And to that end, I wholeheartedly support the proclamation and apologize for being so long-winded.
Yes, thanks. Any other discussion? Motion on the floor is to approve this proclamation as amended with insertion of "after the God-given right" and "constitutional right." No further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimity. All right, Mr. Boone has a resolution prepared, I believe.
Maybe this one's more controversial, we've already had some discussion of it. I'll read the resolution first. Whereas our schools should be kept as safe as possible. And whereas, under North Carolina general statutes fourteen dash two sixty-nine point two, it is a felony for an employee of a public or private school to knowingly carry a weapon on school property. And whereas holders of a valid North Carolina concealed handgun permit have a clean criminal record of taking classroom instructions in firearm use, and have passed both a written and marksmanship test. And whereas schools would be safer if employees who hold a concealed handgun permit were allowed to carry a weapon at school. And whereas school employees who hold a concealed handgun permit should have the right to carry a weapon in their workplace. Now therefore be it resolved, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners urge the General Assembly to amend general statutes in fourteen dash two sixty-nine, two, fourteen dash four fifteen, eleven, and any other relevant statutes, to allow school employees who hold a valid North Carolina concealed handgun permit to carry a weapon at their place of employment. And I move we adopt this resolution.
Okay. Have a motion to adopt this resolution. Any discussion?
Well, I will be much briefer on this one. I jotted down a couple of things and can't seem to find them right now. Respond to a couple of, couple of remarks that Mr. Hazel made. First, I wish he didn't have to pay as much tax as he did. I'll work just as hard as I can to make sure that he does pay less tax.
I just want you to use it the right way.
We will use it the, well, that's out of order. This resolution is not costing any more money than you're appearing before the board and giving your opinion, which you have every right to do, and I welcome your right to do that. But there might be a de minimis cost to printing the minutes or something, that's the only cost to the taxpayer of doing this. It, it, like I said, under the current law, it is a felony. I mean, you know, felonies are pretty bad things. But if, if I were a school teacher or some other school employee and just walked on the school property with my weapon, even if I had a valid handgun permit, I would be committing a felony. And to my mind, that's absurd. If I do that, if I walk on school property with one, I've committed a class I misdemeanor, which is serious enough, not quite as bad as a felony, but it's serious enough. I, I see no point in that holders of concealed handgun permits, and I do have one too, and have for many years, you do have to take, you do have to undergo a background check. You can't have anything much more serious than a traffic violation on your record. And I haven't verified this, but I was told yesterday by one of the, a former officer who, who has taught those classes, that the background requirements for a concealed handgun permit are stricter than those to be certified by a law enforcement officer. I've not, not verified that, but I was told that on pretty good authority. So you have to have a pretty clean record to have a permit. If you've been judgmentally incompetent, or to be mentally ill, you cannot get a handgun permit if you have any kind of physical handicap that prevents the safe use of a weapon, you cannot have a handgun permit. If you're addicted to alcohol or any controlled substance, you can not have a handgun permit. So it's highly unlikely that anyone holding a concealed handgun permit would misuse their weapon or commit a crime. It's possible. Anything's possible. Occasionally, we read about a law enforcement officer who misuses their position, but it's highly unlikely. I think if our schools would be safer if these people could carry a weapon to school if they so chose. I would in no way pressure any school employee to be armed or carry one, it should be entirely the, the choice of the, of the school employee. But if the unthinkable happened, it, it might be good if they were armed. The shooting in Connecticut, the, by the, according to the news accounts, the principal acted very heroically, trying to stop the, the insane man who was committing the murders, and was killed in the process. If she had had a weapon, she may or may not have succeeded, I don't, in disarming him. But she would have had a better chance than she would have been completely unarmed. And I, I just think that this is a change, you know, a simple, common sense change we need in the law. There are a lot of things we can do to make schools safer, this is just one of them. But this is one that has no additional cost to the taxpayers, and, and I think has, has no drawbacks to it. And so that's why I'm proposing.
Okay.
Any further, little discussion if we could?
Yeah.
Um, just for the record, I agree, the Second Amendment has nothing to do with duck hunting, home protection, school shootings, target shooting, none of that stuff. Second Amendment is so, is part, was, was written, and if you read the, I like going back to what the founding fathers wrote, and it clearly, it was to give the citizens the ability to take back control from a, from an oppressive government. Which almost leads you to believe that, that military-type weapons were specifically what they had in mind. But I certainly don't want to open up that can of worms in that direction. I believe that our founding fathers were wise in their decision, they were correct. I also believe that registration is a precursor to special taxation, and that if you think cigarette smokers are villainized, you wait to see what's going to happen to gun owners here, probably in the next four years. I also believe that when there's a bad person with a gun, usually the only way to stop them is for there to be a good person with a gun. That being said, I will not vote for this specific resolution, for this specific resolution, for the following reasons. Number one is the decision to allow or not allow guns on school property is not a county commissioner decision. And I don't want to pretend that it's our decision. I don't want anybody to be misled into believing that it's our decision. And, and unfortunately, by us even discussing it, there's going to be people who believe that, that it's our call. And, and we get, people confuse what we have the ability to do, what we have the right to do, and what we have the obligation to do, enough as it is. And I sure don't want to, I want us to, to And I sure don't want to, I want us to, to be in the middle of this one any more than we have to. The second one is I really hate opening up the door, recommended decisions on all state and federal policies that we don't, uh, agree with. And we all make comments about it. I do it from up here, other people do it from up here. I mean, you know, I think Obamacare is unconstitutional, but, I mean, if we start, if we start making proclamations and resolutions, which I don't mind doing the proclamation for, to, to recognize Second Amendment on, I think that's the same day as the NRA banquet, or was that the same day? I thought it, just not?
No.
Okay, sorry. But anyway, I, I, I don't have a, a problem with that, but I really don't want this board to get bogged down, taking an hour every meeting with us, wearing out a litany of, of different things that we disagree with the state and federal government on, because we could sure fill up three hours a night with, with that. The third reason is this is a, this is a school issue, and we have two school boards in the county. Before I were, even if I wanted to, to vote for this as it's written, I, I think that we would owe it to our respective school boards, who are the elected representatives of the people on school issues, that we should at least give them an opportunity to, to talk to us about it. Um, and we've not, we've not asked them their opinion, and I feel like before we vote, even vote on something like this, we should have their, um, their official input. Fourth reason is there's a huge gap between a concealed carry permit and someone trained how to handle a weapon in a hostile situation. Now, I wore an Army uniform for twenty-six years, and I know how to use a long, a, a, a fully automatic weapon, a rifle, and I know how to use a semiotic, semi-automatic And I would hate to have to discharge that firearm in a classroom full of kids or a schoolhouse full of kids. But if any, but if somebody is going to do that, I want it to be somebody who's trained to do it. And my, I'm not opposed to having teachers or school, selected school people get trained and have weapons in the school system, so that we can have more than just a school resource officer. But that, but that threshold of, of proper training and preparedness certainly rises above the level of a concealed carry permit. So I do, I do have a problem with that being the threshold. And then the last thing, and I, and I did call teachers, and I did ask teachers about this, and this is the impact, the, 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 the input that I got from teachers was they said that, that teachers get distracted easily. The elementary teacher said this, the high school teachers really said this. And that, um, if the, if you don't have the gun strapped to you, that, the, that there's a chance that that gun can end up in the hands of a child. You know, if, if you forget to lock it in the drawer, in your desk drawer, if you accidentally leave it in your pocketbook, um, and you think during the, during the warm months, most teachers are, are wearing light clothes, so they're not wearing jackets and stuff so that the, so that the weapon would be concealed, and probably the, the tendency would be to take the gun off and put it somewhere, and then all of a sudden, we've got unintended consequences. So while I support the Second Amendment, and also support having more people who are trained with weapons in the school to prevent something like this, this specific resolution at this time without discussing it with our own elected representatives, I can't vote for it, and, and I won't, okay?
Okay. Any other discussion?
Uh, just a couple of comments. I'd never claimed this was the commissioner's decision. We're obviously asking the state to change a state statute. The state statute doesn't only apply to public schools, it applies to private schools. It applies to any school or college except for a home school. So say at the school Ms. Griffith's principal of, they, they cannot make their own decisions about firearms. The state dictates it for them. And as far as our local school board, I'd hope they would agree with us on this. I don't know, but right now, they have no authority. If they wanted to allow the school employees to carry a weapon to school, they do not have that option. The state has taken that option away from them. And all this resolution is doing is asking the state to, you know, amend that, I think, draconian part of the, part of the state statute.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I work with children every day, and I take my responsibility as serious as being a mother. I, I look at my job as probably, under being a wife and a mother, the most important thing that I do. And I, I personally would do whatever it took to prevent anything from happening to a child in our school. I would do whatever it took. I believe if we had a sign on the front of our school, if the sign said, "No weapons allowed," every person walking in there is aware that we are a soft target. When those children are all lined up for dismissal and we are all outside, I mean, devastation can happen in, in a blink of an eye. If there were a sign outside of our doors that said, "Our staff is trained and armed, and any attempt to harm a child will result in the use of deadly force," I think it would make a person think twice before they stepped in my school to do harm. And Mr. Boone is absolutely correct. We have no options as a private school, and we receive no government money. We get not a single dime from the state of North Carolina to offset the cost of tuition, and personally, we don't want it. We don't want the state's money. But in that regard, uh, they have limited us in what we can do to protect our children. And as a responsible gun owner, and as a concealed carry permit person, uh, citizen of Idaho County, I, I support this resolution, uh, resolution, asking the legislature to take a look at this, at this law, and give the authority back to the community where it belongs.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Is it possible to hear any questions or comments from this room?
No, sir, this is not a public hearing, I'm sorry. Uh, I'll just say this, I don't know of any other issue that brings to the forefront the clash between those who subscribe to a more liberal philosophy and those who subscribe to a more conservative philosophy. It directly, it is the fork in the road where those who believe that you can regulate human behavior externally clashes with those who believe that human, changing human behavior can only, can only originate from within. And, uh, I, I believe that the gun violence is, is not a problem, folks, it's a symptom, a symptom of our moral decline. And people who, uh, who are moral people, who own guns, feel put upon because people are trying to take away a right that they think is God-given, and I share that point of view. I will share with you, with you this, uh... I, I pass time, since I've become older and have less physical prowess, I've become an avid reader, and I read a lot of books. The best book I've read in the last five years is by Jacques Burton. He's a Frenchman. By birth, he came here with his parents. He died at the age of a hundred and four. He is ninety-three years old. He published what I think was his greatest work. It says, "From Dawn to Decadence: The Last Five Hundred Years of Western Civilization." One of the most profound observations he made in that book, he says, "When the absurd becomes commonplace and ordinary, your culture is in decadence." Folks, you can look around you, and absurd is commonplace. It is absurd for someone to kill little children with any kind of weapon. It is simply absurd. It defies all logic. And I'll say this, at running the risk of offending some people, I'm sure, in some quarters, but unless we return to the moral foundation that founded this principle, ladies and gentlemen, we live in the twilight of great civilization. I'm a firm believer in that. Any other discussion?
All in favor of the motion to adopt this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries three-two.
At this point, uh, I move we go into closed session under a general statute, 143-318-11A3
as pertains to attorney-client, 143-318-11A6 in regards to personnel, 143-318-11A5, property acquisition, and 143-318-11A4 for economic development. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.[1245.41]
...
Mr. Salivi?
Yes.
Still here.
Yeah.
I, I normally insult your intelligence at least once, but-
Tonight, I think I'm feeling very-
Mr. Chairman, can I mention one thing for- oh, you have it in front of us.
Oh, yeah. Here, go ahead.
You have a proposed agenda for the, um, for the retreat, and this, i- it's really not set in stone. This is your retreat, and basically, these are issues that have come up over the last year, and, or, or there are things that we've had specific conversations about. Um, but if you'd like to add anything or adjust anything on this, then, then that's fine as well. I have notified the school systems of their presentations, so that's really the only one where we have an outside group coming in to, to talk to us. Just wanted to present that for information, and we will have that at the, at the Ag Center.
There was no direct action result of whatever thing we talked about.
Could I, could I make one motion that we instruct our clerk to craft a letter? Ron, you work with her on this to amend that thousand-hour limit in a year.
Okay.
With your reason.
That goes to the General Assembly.
Right. Just write, write it to our legislative delegation of that.
Is there a number besides a thousand? Because otherwise, they could come back and say two hundred.
Yeah. Hey, what, y'all, you, you look at your internal data and what you would need to make it work, and you just come up with a number and, and, uh, craft a letter where it would help things work for you.
Okay.
But, you know, the private sector doesn't get to do that, retire and then turn around and basically work full-time again. You know, if we increase the number, that's what we're doing, is we're allowing people to retire and then st- stay at work and collect tuition.
It used to be a thousand eighty hours. If you got to a thousand eighty hours, you had to pay benefits. So I'm sure it's still the same way.
Well, the, the, the whole setup for generations for pensions, especially public pension, has been wrong. If they'd been set up as a defined contribution system like a 401K, what you had would be yours. It would make no difference what you did after that, and everything would be fully funded. If it'd been done that way, we have no problems at all.
Okay.
So everybody's in agreement?
Sure.
Okay. All right. There'll be no further action result, our closed sessions, all for a motion we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.